It is time to call a meeting to order. Would you call for roll call, please?
Counselperson Brennan?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
McGinty?
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would like a motion to suspend the voting procedure for this meeting.
I'll make the motion to suspend the procedures for this meeting. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the voting procedure for this meeting. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number two... Oh, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Item number two, feel free to comment on any of the items as they're shown on our agenda tonight. And item number five this evening is the citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. So we'll move on with number two. Do any of the council persons have any conflict of interest on anything on the agenda this evening? Okay. Item number three is consent agenda. A is approval of agenda. B is approval of the minutes of the July 8th, 2014 council meeting. C is the Sack County Auditor's Office to address the council regarding forgiveness of late fees on utility bills. And D is receipts and disbursements.
Do we need to strike for A and one underneath?
Yes. And on that, Adam has mentioned that they're not ready to move forward with... The attorney isn't ready to move forward with the facade agreement, so we are striking A, number one.
And the auditors request these numbers... So this is just for one month, is that right?
Correct, and this corresponds with account numbers. That's what they're identifying for, what entities are involved and what the account numbers are.
And that's just for... It has to be done month by month, is that correct?
According to the ordinance, anytime they have a late penalty, the governmental body would be... Would require to ask individually for that.
So they have a late penalty with the city?
Yes. Yep.
I would move consent agenda.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of July 8th, 2014 council meeting. C, Sack County Auditor's Office, according to the late fees... Forgiveness of the late fees on the utility bills. And D, receipts and disbursements. And four, striking A, one. But we are approving the B, Sack City.
Yeah, that's still on the agenda.
Yeah. Airport Equipment Improvement Project, awarding it to Lindeman Tractor in consideration of approving change order number one in the amount of minus $12,310.
Are those part of the consent?
Well, if...
We have to vote on three.
A is, then is it B as well, because it's part of the projects?
We're just on consent of agenda, though, right now?
Yeah, we're in a consent.
We need to make a motion to approve consent of agenda first, and then that's separate?
That is separate. Okay. Never mind.
You head up yourself.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to four projects. A is... One is Stricken. B, Sack City Airport Equipment Improvement Project. Number one, consideration of awarding equipment contract to Lindeman Tractor.
This is the same thing you approved a couple of months ago. There's a provision, I think I mentioned or referenced it, there's a provision that requires that you approve it. You require to take action after the grant approval. It has not changed.
So we need a motion to award the equipment contract to Lindeman Tractor?
Correct.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to award the contract to Lindeman Tractor. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
B, Sack City Airport Equipment Improvement Project. Number two is consideration of approving change order number one in the amount of minus $12,310.
I would move approving change order number one in the amount of negative $12,310.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve change order one in the amount of minus $12,310. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number five is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. There being none, we will move on to continuing business. Item number six, A is Blue Space Creative. And I believe the announcement is that they will be here next Wednesday?
Tuesday.
The 29th at 5:30 to address the council.
Yep.
Item number B is Chautauqua Park Improvement Update.
Sure. You might be aware that the roof is nearly complete on the fish house. They've been working on it this week. And I believe they'll start on the electric next week. I think they've got that set up to start next week.
You said Blue Space will be here next Tuesday?
Yes, the 29th at 5:30.
Five thirty.
5:30. Yep.
I did talk to Ree Erwin, who's our representative for the Sack County Foundation grants. Told her that we were not going to have the project done by the 1st of August because I couldn't get people down there in communes to do electric work. And so hopefully we are covered for that.
Okay. Anything else about the Chautauqua Park improvement? Okay. C is Urban Development Area Update.
We had... The committee had a meeting today. We've tentatively set August 5th as a date that we're going to present an initial plan to the county supervisors.
Is there anything else regarding that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then we'll move on to seven miscellaneous. A is the second reading of ordinance number 2014-259, an ordinance authorizing the vacation and sale of attractive land located at north 88.98 of west 44, Lot 2, Block 18, original city of Sack City, Iowa. Have you received any written of anything or any comments or anything about that?
No.
Okay.
I would move passage of the second reading of ordinance number 2014-259 entitled, "Ordinance Authorizing the Vacation and Sale of Attractive Land Located at North 88.98 Feet of West 44 Feet, Lot 2, Block 18, Original City of Sack City, Iowa."
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2014-259, an ordinance authorizing the vacation and sale of attractive land located at north 88.98 of west 44, Lot 2, Block 18, Original City of Sack City, Iowa. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can we waive the third reading of that?
You can, yes.
You want to make that motion?
Yes.
I would move waiving the third reading of the ordinance number 2014-259.
Second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to waive the third reading of ordinance number 2014-259, authorizing the sale and vacation of attractive land on Main Street. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan? Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Seven miscellaneous. B is consideration of sidewalk improvements at 507 West Main Street.
There's two elements we should probably go over at this point.
Yeah, the first one is that's the wrong address.
It is.
It's 509, not 7.
You don't want yours.
I already replaced it.
Okay.
Would've been nice, though, Husted.
Well, there's three elements to discuss. One of them that we need to discuss is the actual replacement of that sidewalk. That sidewalk is broken up some, and I've received a recommendation from internally that we, in the process of getting rid of this, we should also improve the sidewalk on it. So we... I've taken arrangements with John Phillips, had him take a look at it and do some preparation for it. So we would proceed to have this done prior to the sale, is what our intent would be. But I know it was discussed a little bit at the last council meeting that we were working through this. And so I'm asking the council for permission to move forward with that. And then after we get done with that, if there's any discussion on that... The second thing is probably this would be the appropriate time to pull off the table the Chapter 136 discussion.
I would move that we have the city workers in small sidewalk, replace the existing sidewalk at 509 West Main Street.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to replace the existing sidewalk at 509 West Main Street. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number...
We're talking about pulling that off the table.
With regard to pulling the discussion on Chapter 136, I'll make the motion to take off the table, that discussion on Chapter 136.
I would second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to delete the update.
No.
What? To remove the discussion on Chapter 136 off?
Off the table.
All right.
So that we can discuss it.
Okay. So then are you wanting to go to D?
No. We would then discuss it after.
All right. C, update on sidewalk on 218 South 13th.
No. You need a vote on taking this off the table.
Excuse me. Has the motion been made to take it off?
No, made it.
And made a second. Okay. Would you call for a vote, please? I'm totally confused. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You missed one.
I don't get to vote?
Oh.
It's all a big...
It is.
Who did I call twice?
I did.
I think Brennan said yes twice. Brennan said yes twice.
We've started off real well in this conversation. You will see in your packets a copy of proposed amendment. It's not, of course, on the agenda tonight. This is just an easier way to possibly start the conversation as far as plans. What I want to point out to you is a lot of it's just more house cleaning related items. It doesn't really involve a sum up of the full conversation on sidewalks. 136.22, which you will see at the bottom of page two, that's the provision within the code where it describes the requirements. That's the policy that's being... That's been of question over the last few weeks. Up till that, everything else that you see included in the ordinance there are... Most of them are purely related to just house cleaning items. For instance, it goes into quite a bit of detail as far as what type of activities you have to do for ramps and things of that nature. All of those provisions are dictated by state and federal laws. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have too much language in there on our behalf because that simply means that when the federal laws change, then we're going to be responsible for changing our own laws. If we change our law to simply read that they must conform to state and federal laws, we've covered ourselves even when they make modifications to their own laws. So it's a little more simplistic for us because we're not going to revamp and recommunicate the entire ADA particular compliance issues in our code. So that way, if they're going to have to look at ADA anyway, why try to even attempt to include a lot of the ADA language in our code itself? So it simplifies the code system just a little bit. Other than that, that's the primary issue that you'll see throughout the other sectional elements until you get down to 136.22. The only change I put into 136.22 as part of this discussion was the enforcement of the sidewalk. Whatever changes you make, my recommendation was is that the first line of defense when dealing with enforcement for sidewalk issues would be with the zoning administrator because they're going to be the ones... One of the things we've been looking at is they're going to be the ones that know what housing permits are being requested. And so they would be ideally set to be the one to communicate to people on whatever action they need to be taking. That if you're building a house, you need to be doing this, you need to be doing that. They're ideally located to deal with that issue. Whereas in the office, we might not know that information for weeks or months later when you come to turn on utilities or something like that. That's when we would be able to identify because we're not always adapting everything... Excuse me. Everything that's being built inside of town. But other than that, I understand you guys have been talking... While I was gone, there was quite a bit of discussion about 136.22 because that would be the provision that talks about what the responsibilities for putting in a sidewalk are.
So let's have that discussion.
Well, it seems to me that we have four options. One, we could kind of leave it as it is and do nothing. One, we could eliminate the entire chapter and say we don't want to deal with sidewalks. We could say that... We could do something saying if you're with... If you have a sidewalk within a certain distance of where you're building a sidewalk, you could do that. And... Or we could do one, since the zoning officer is doing it, if we did kind of a map overlay and said, "These are the areas where we have sidewalks." I did... I got bored the other night and looked at... Was looking at the Beacon site, and there's a... I mean, this is... I think some of you might have copies of this. This is the areas where there are sidewalks in town. And basically eliminate... Gitchwell is like the... Up to Gitchwell, a bit left Gitchwell.
Main Street is a sidewalk, right?
Yeah. Anything inside of this boundary?
Inside of the boundary.
Inside of the boundary would be our kind of... I just use pedestrian friendly zone. I don't know. I mean, I just was, you know...
John, remember when we were doing this for the school and we looked at every sidewalk in town to see if they were safe and whatever?
Yeah, there was quite a few that weren't.
Yeah, there's a lot of them that are not safe and that don't have... Aren't handicapped accessible. There's a lot of bad ones.
I guess... My feeling is maybe that... I think we should... I like sidewalks. I... It may be a day where we're talking about bike trails, that kind of stuff. It seems odd to not have sidewalks when they're trying to... You know, let's kind of deal with this. I would hate to see us remove the sidewalk requirement entirely. I think that having people come back with forgiveness when they... You know, in some of the remote areas doesn't make sense. I think the map area is easiest to enforce. I mean, that's just my gut instinct.
But there is one exception to this. You'll find a lot of streets in Sack City where the sidewalk's only on one side of the block, not across the street on the other side. So are we going to incorporate them if they build a new dwelling on the side that has no sidewalk? I mean, we have to have some kind of an exemption or something that'll be pretty much straightforward and fair to everyone.
I hesitate to use the word block.
Well, let's say the whole street. But 10th Street... There are several streets in town that, all the way down, only have sidewalks on one side. So I don't know if we can incorporate the other side into it and be fair.
Well, if that's the case, then we're definitely going to have to change 136.22. But as it reads right now, for Crystal's benefit...
Exactly.
I mean, when she was given her order, building permit, whatever, it read that she had to put a sidewalk there if there was...
Under these circumstances, she would. Because that's the side of the street that has a sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think we could say, you know, this... I would rather see us do a number of feet. Like Crystal's situation, or, I mean, as I was driving out here tonight, if you look at coming down 8th Street where I live. So on the north side of Main Street, there's 7th, there's 8th, there's 9th. Say, on the south side of Main Street, there's 7th, 8th, and 9th. On the north side of Main Street, so is it one block from 7th to 9th? Or is it... You know, or what does it divide? It would divide kind of in the middle of Steve Oliver's house.
But technically, like I talked to you earlier, this would probably not affect a lot of things because it only affects a residence where the... Actually, the residence was taken down on the side of the street that had no sidewalks. Would that individual then, if they decided to build a house on that side of the street, be required to put in a sidewalk? I'd say no. There's none all the way down that street. Why would you have one stuck sidewalk in the middle of a block?
Yeah.
And define it as the street, you know, from point A to point B, not the whole block because part of that block may have some sidewalk.
They turn the corner or...
But you turn the corner and there is none.
Marilla was the street that we're discussing.
Yeah. I mean, if we can come up with verbiage for it, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. That's just a thought.
So Crystal didn't have a sidewalk in front of her house before she built it there, but there's sidewalk abutting up to it.
Yeah.
So what are you thinking on that one?
There isn't.
It stops at your mom's house, right?
No.
South of where you're at.
But it doesn't go to the property line. There's no sidewalk on either side of my property.
Oh, okay. Can we... I mean, I... Whatever we do in the ordinance, I don't... Can we look at the ordinance and then maybe look at the specific example?
Well, I feel it's going to take more discussion and a lot more input before we can ever come to any total suggestion on what to do.
And it's not on the agenda tonight as a voting process.
It's just a discussion anyhow. I understand that.
All right. Since we just continue to keep coming back and talking, what, do we want a subcommittee to really do some work on this? Is there a couple of you that would like to volunteer to really come up with?
I think...
Meat and potatoes on this?
Well, I think we're real close on this. It's just a matter of changing the verbiage on the particular streets that we're discussing. Everything else will be pretty well cut and dried personally. What do you guys think?
Tom just volunteered for that.
You know, I... Could I make the suggestion? Bruce has worked a lot on the verbiage of this already on the front page there. And then if we add Tom's suggestion, you know, if there's no sidewalk on the opposite side of the street inside the zone, then a new construction would be exempt on the opposite side of the street. And then we just have to define exactly what we mean by street across the road. And I think Bruce has, you know, come up with, you know, some good verbiage there. Then with Tom's addition and, you know, utilizing that pedestrian friendly zone, I would suggest, you know, Bruce at least be on the committee, you know, for the final verbiage.
Okay. Tom, do you and Bruce want to work on it?
Yeah, that's fine, Steve.
Sure. Okay. We are not making any decision.
No.
So, okay.
Should we be on the agenda for next meeting?
Assuming you guys get together and come up with a language, we'd be ready to propose...
Let him know if you're ready.
An introduction of an ordinance.
Okay. D is update on the side.
Well, if you've got C, if you want to discuss it with Crystal.
Update on sidewalk on 218 South 13th Street.
I invited Crystal tonight because I knew we'd be discussing sidewalks, and I thought she'd want to be here just in case there was anything going on. I thought, since she'd been heavily involved in what's going on, she'd want to be here.
Sure.
So that's what I had this on here for, is if you guys had a dialogue you wanted to have or if she had a dialogue she wanted to have with you, it was on here for that purpose.
I didn't mean to skip you, I'm sorry.
I was just curious, when Tom was talking, I couldn't quite hear him. Did you say that on my property would be the side with the sidewalk or without?
Is there sidewalks?
Huh?
Is there sidewalks other than yours and your mother's?
No, not all the way up to the museum. There's not. There is south, but not all the way north. But there is... My misunderstanding is I couldn't hear what you were talking about across the...
Well, my proposal would be if there's a sidewalk on that block and it's continuous in the next block, that it'd be required.
It isn't.
Okay. But, and then I didn't hear about across the street. Did you say there wasn't? Because there is.
No, not on your street. We're talking other streets in town.
That's where I...
I'm sorry, yes.
There isn't a sidewalk across the street from you, is there?
Yep. All the way.
Yes, all the way.
There is one on the other side of the street from you.
Because that's where Larry Naylor lived and Eddie Quail. And I think her name is... It's not Zimmer.
The White House.
Yeah, that older lady. Yeah, there is sidewalk.
And that goes all the way north and south on that side?
Whatever we do to the ordinance, it doesn't really affect what was in place when Crystal built her house. So, I mean, as I look at it, we have the excuse... We have either we waive the requirement or we don't waive it. I mean, I think it has to be done based on the old ordinance because changing the ordinance doesn't affect Crystal at all. Because we can't, you know, any more than we could say, "I'd like the speed limit out here to be 85 and that way that the ticket that Officer Thompson gave me would not be valid."
Well, the council has before... Either tonight or in the future, has a question before that's an existing question, and that is a request from Crystal on whether or not you want to forgive her requirement to do so or not forgive her requirement to do so. And in that case, if there's any negotiation as far as time period goes, that would be the proper time to have that conversation. But as of right now, that question, based on everything I'm hearing here, that question still has not changed. That question is still before the council to answer that question.
Right. And the old, you know, 136.22 and all the changes that we've proposed really don't, you know, if we go by the old or the new, really doesn't change her situation at all.
No. Which means you still have the question before.
Right. Which we can solve at it right this time. And my feeling is, is, you know, I would like to see sidewalks maintained in the, you know, in the city. And I think the pedestrian friendly zone that Bruce has drawn up, you know, helps us define where we want the sidewalks considering what has been grandfathered in where there are no sidewalks. So I would be, you know, in favor of, you know, seeing sidewalks, you know, inside that zone to be enforced at this point.
What would be a reasonable... I know you hesitate to do a term. What would be a reasonable... I would like to see a sidewalk at your house. I would also... But I would like to see maybe some closure if we could say yes, if we could come up with, "I can do a sidewalk by..." I mean, a certain amount of time. I mean, I... I mean, I know it's...
And you can't act on this. It's on the agenda.
I know there's some issues on both sides. I guess my feeling is that the sidewalk is very close. It is continuous for five blocks going south of your house, basically, except for the small spot between you and the property owner that is your mother's.
Right.
I mean, is there, is there a timeframe that you would be comfortable?
I don't wanna get into the whole timeframe because I, I stated, I mean, it's, it's simply.
I understand you don't wanna get into the timeframe, but as the ordinance reads, it needs to be constructed. So I guess what I'm saying is, is there a way that we can?
Right, but as the ordinance reads, you know, Vicky Payton should have a sidewalk also. Because as the ordinance reads, it doesn't say any new construction, you know, unless you build on a street that doesn't have sidewalk on it, which there is sidewalk on that street. It comes across Aaron's Bridge and it goes across Williams's.
Unfortunately, we can't undo the past. All we can look at is, you know, moving forward. And as I, in reading the letters that were sent to property owners that are on file, most of them were not a waiver. They said that they were, I, given, the council could request a sidewalk at any time within any phase of that. It wasn't a waiver, it was a delay. I didn't, I didn't find what was actually sent to Payton's, but the others that I found in the files said, at this time, if the council decides they want a sidewalk, you will install one within ninety. It wasn't totally a waiver, it was a delay.
What's the scoop with Hanson's then too? Cause they just are getting theirs built. Do they have to put a sidewalk in too then?
I'm waiting for an answer on this to send them a letter. Because they.
Well, if we make Crystal do one, then Hanson's better do one because their house was built before we redo this.
I'm waiting for a letter to, I mean.
I don't think it's a decision the council should make tonight. I think we need to have some further discussion on it. Or you're gonna have all kinds of people knocking on our doors. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking Crystal needs to have a sidewalk. Yes, I agree, because it is in the ordinance that says that she needs a sidewalk. But then my comment is, I agree with Crystal also. Why didn't Payton's have to do one? Their house is fairly new, and why aren't Hanson's having to do one? I think we have to have consistency. You've said it before yourself, Adam. You set the precedence for future.
You know, and I think this is, you know, and I, I think Crystal has done us a favor by bringing this to our attention.
Oh, I agree. I'm.
To, you know, for us to clean this up, and, and I think, you know, with the committee coming up with the proposal and defining that, you know, pedestrian, you know, friendly zone, that what we're doing is hopefully establishing what the rules are and to start not allowing, you know, a very few exceptions to the rule that going forward, we are going to enforce it, and just because we've, you know, been inconsistent in the past does not mean that we can't be consistent in the future, which is, I think, is what we're really trying to do and define by cleaning the ordinance up and being consistent going forward. So unfortunately, we have to pick a time where we say, yeah, this is it. We're gonna be consistent. We're gonna enforce it. And so I feel comfortable going forward with, you know, with Crystal at this time. You know, just, you know, I, you know, I have enough information in front of me to know that we're going to and that we're not gonna be making exceptions very often, uh, going forward.
I think then those two houses have to have sidewalks as well.
I agree.
Cause it's, they're built right now when this ordinance says. But if you build a new construction, it has to have a new sidewalk. That's on the books now. It's, and we haven't changed a thing.
What did their, what did their building permit say when they got their building permits? Hanson's and Payton's?
I would have to talk to Stacy, Stacy Cross and answer that question. I could answer for you.
I'd go back to Terry Duffy on Payton's.
Yeah. I'd go back three, three P and Z offices ago.
What would they have anything to do with it, with if our ordinance says that if you build a new construction, you have to have a sidewalk?
Yeah, cause they were, at the time, i- i- it's kind of an unknown secret that, for the most part, we are made aware of what's going on from the zoning officer. We've always enforced based upon when the zoning officer makes us aware that there's a house situation going on. So that's the only time we would know to enforce it typically is when the zoning officer notifies us that there's a house issue going on. That's why we were, I was talking earlier and about the ordinance changes make the enforcement on the side of the zoning officer because they are aware of what zoning requests are, are being made.
I think our question was, what does the building permit have to do with the ordinance saying regardless of whether there was a sidewalk drawn on their building permit or not, the ordinance states that you have to have one.
It would have nothing to do with what's on.
So if you didn't have it on their building permit, you would have to reapply for another building permit to put it in.
Has nothing to do with the building permit. It's our ordinance.
Yeah, you would still be required.
So we would need to enforce that on those new properties that build new houses as well. Cause it's still on the books and those houses are built. So we can't do one and then not another. That's my opinion.
Is Aaron's involved with this area on the map? Aaron's Street. Because there's no sidewalks on any of that.
No, there isn't any. I bet it isn't.
On either side of the street.
I bet if he based it upon where the walk paths are, I bet it isn't.
But where is that, Bruce? In the zone?
There's a lot of people that walk out and take their walk out there.
Where is Aaron's Street? I'm drawing a blank.
Absolutely, I agree. There's a lot of people that walk.
It'd be the one past.
And they walk in the middle of the street.
Which is true with you, and I don't think it's fair to call that not part of the pedestrian friendly part of town because there are a number of people that walk out. I mean, I see somebody walking, jogging out there daily.
That, that area is not.
And I don't know how you can say one part of the city is more important to have sidewalk.
Oh, you do? Well, there.
Well, and you know what? This really doesn't matter. Because this is your ordinance right here. So whether it's sidewalks or not, this part of it is not in this ordinance right now.
That's what I was trying to say. We need to, we need to separate the discussion of the ordinance and the discussion of of Crystal's situation. Did Payton's come and get a waiver of a sidewalk?
I'd have to go back and look. I believe they did.
I asked Larry Payton myself. I spoke to Larry Payton and he said no. He said it was never, the city never even mentioned it to him.
I'd have to go back and look. I thought he did, but I don't remember.
Cause I had called down and talked to Vicky and she gave me Larry's number and asked me to call.
So these waivers, what?
All they do is just request it.
Request not to have a sidewalk?
Yeah.
And they, they come before the council?
Yeah. Yeah, we've had probably since, since the time I've been here, we've probably had four or five.
They've never come since they built their house, and I've not missed a meeting.
So to me, what good is your, when you can come in and just say, can I have a waiver not to have a sidewalk? What good is our ordinance? I mean.
Well, but that's specifically what the ordinance now rates, is that you have to do it unless you are given a waiver by the city council. It actually says that.
Yeah, I know it says that, but what I'm saying, what good is a waiver if you, if we want to enforce the sidewalk thing, then.
I have additional question. Were you informed when you built a new house that it was, um, you were mandated to put a sidewalk within a certain amount of time? Did they, were you told that when you came to get your building permit or whatever?
Now, that does not match with what Phil tells me, and I know I sent a letter to you last year.
After the, I meant before the house was built. Like, when you come and ask about building a house, do you tell people that when you build a new house, you have to, it's, it's in our ordinances that you have to install a sidewalk? Or do you do it after it's built?
That's why we're looking at having the zoning officer enforce it, is because we have no knowledge of who's building a house until the permit's already approved in the city office. We would have no way of knowing. So it only makes sense to have the enforcement officer be the one that actually enforce it.
That's why I'm asking that question. I'm not, I'm not trying to start an argument. I'm saying if I was building a new house and nobody told me that I was mandated to put in a sidewalk until after I built, I mean, I think that should be part of the conversation when you get a building permit. Say, oh, you know, when you build this house, our ordinance says that you must install a sidewalk. There wouldn't be all these questions.
And it's on the permit though, right? It has a thing for sidewalks.
The actual permit that you put in your window?
No, the one you fell out to get that.
No, I mean, it doesn't.
There's a part there.
There's a, there's a little. Yeah, there's a planning and zoning piece that hasn't been used, but.
See, that's a big thing. I, I sat here and I was on the P and Z. When we adopted this new ordinance, a lot of ordinances at that time, after going through that book for five years and finally coming up with these. And then we had that last blow up when we had sidewalks. And it got to about this same place where we're talking here again. After, what, Gary, five years? You know, are we gonna put sidewalks on them or aren't we gonna put sidewalks? And, and, and that's a decision that we've got to the stop sign, but we've never voted.
When we waived those circumstances, there were special circumstances.
You know, we were talking downtown.
A new house went in and there was no sidewalks going either direction, we waived it.
You waived it?
That was what we felt. That's what we were doing with the waiving in the past, way back.
But I, I, I think we're up to that T intersection. We gotta decide, how are we gonna enforce all ordinances? Not just the sidewalk ordinance, but, you know, so many other things. Are we, are we? Are we gonna waive this or waive that? You know, we sat there on P and Z. I don't know how many times things came to us. Probably the best one that probably hurt me the worst was up here at Larry Moore's, his new garage. It's like three inches off of the alley. He took it to the board of adjustment, and the board of adjustments is like a, a stamp. Everything gets approved.
When was this ordinance for the sidewalks adopted?
It was on the, it was on the, the ordinances, it was still there in nineteen seventy-six when I was going back to the old ordinances.
This, this very one?
This very one.
This very one. Was there?
You know, the stop sign that you mentioned, Steve, that we're coming up to that point and then we just don't go beyond it. I, I think we're at that point. When the committee comes together and comes up with the final recommendation with some of the verbiage that we've already, that Bruce and I discussed this morning, and I talked, you know, that that verbiage is there, and then Tom's addition on the opposite side of the street, we're more concisely defining it where our, my hope is, is that we are gonna enforce it going forward and, and, you know, you know, equally to everybody, you know, so.
You know, I, I guess I'm gonna say, I, I go along. I don't think she needs to put a sidewalk there. Because South Thirteenth doesn't go through to Main Street, the sidewalks on neither side.
Oh, no.
They, they, the greenhouse where Mrs. Gerard lived for years, there's no sidewalks in the front. And then we go to Eric Shaw's body shop, there's no sidewalk on the west.
Okay, but, you know, south of Crystal's and her mother's is continuous sidewalk. So, you know, and I think, do you have, you, who has title to both properties? But anyway, if those two properties do have sidewalk put in, it is taken further north. Sure, it doesn't go all the way to the end, but if we don't have a sidewalk there, if at any time there's any construction or whatever, if we don't have them put it in, then it's taken away forever to ever have a sidewalk up to Main Street. Because it is, you know, it's not continuous and, you know, it really misses the whole point. So we don't wanna leave something out now going forward.
But like I said, I, you know, you sit there and you look, that lot has been open before she put her house in there for forty years, you know?
But we're not just talking about her, her lot. We're talking about everything in the future.
Right.
Going north of her lot.
Right.
So if we leave that open now.
Right.
We're in effect leaving it open forever. And that's what I wanna see precluded.
You have a question?
Yes.
Okay, if that house sells north of Crystal, changes ownership, are you gonna make that person put a sidewalk in?
It's not new construction.
It only falls under new construction.
So it'll never be completed then unless the house is torn down and the house is built. So why would you?
Unless they're all torn down and rebuilt. Unless they're all torn down all the way to Main Street and rebuilt. That one would have to be torn down. Bovels would have to be torn down. Mike Judd's would have to be torn down. Wartes's would have to be torn down. And all rebuilt.
Well, actually, that's not totally true because the ordinance says the council could require a sidewalk put into any place that they want.
That's what I'm asking. So if one property changes, are they gonna have to put a sidewalk?
Some cities do do that, yeah. They, they will institute sidewalks throughout the entire community, and then they.
The council may order the construction of permanent sidewalks upon any street or court in the city.
And I think that should stay.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
Stacy says that he had spoken with you last summer and, and said that you were going to put in the sidewalks after your, after your driveway was done. I got a note here from him saying that. I mean, is there, I guess, I'm curious why the change of heart?
I haven't had a change of heart, and I wanted to clarify for Teresa because she wasn't at the first council meeting that, when I was here. I informed everybody, just, I just wanted to bring you up to speed. That I, I have every intention of putting a sidewalk in. When I came out, because I told them, I said, I have a couple of young kids. I babysit for baby and Jamie. You know, I'd like to have a sidewalk. I have a mom who has to walk across my yard or in the street. And I had a conversation with Adam and he said, well, once you give us a date, then, you know, if you haven't met that date, then we can start. Court proceedings against you. And I said, okay, well, I don't wanna hand you the news to hang me with. So I have every intention of putting a sidewalk in. I'm having a hard time making, giving a date knowing that if I don't meet that deadline, then the court proceedings start against me because you can appreciate the fact that with children, broken lights happen, braces happen, you know, anything, appendix burst, you know, whatever. Car accidents with massive brain surgeries happen, you know, I mean, that's all realistic things. And so I said, I would like to get it in as soon as it's feasible for me. You know, I just, until then, you know, I would just like the waiver because other people have been waived, you know? I, I honestly, with the way the ordinance stands, and I, I appreciate everything you guys are saying. I understand everything you're saying. I'm glad you say, well, if we're gonna, you know, make Crystal commit and make her put a sidewalk in, then Hanson's are gonna put one in. Because like you said, it doesn't state anything, and I understand what Bill's saying, you know, in regards, well, if we let Crystal off, you know, then there's no chance of ever having a sidewalk all the way to Main Street. Well, you've got Hanson's, and then you've got an empty lot besides that, and then there's sidewalk in front of Williams's, so if you don't let Hanson's go up, then you're never gonna get it all the way to South Fifth. You know, I could say that in my defense on the other shoe, you know? So I understand entirely what you're saying, um, but I am glad that you, and I, I honestly think, me, I'm the, should be the lesser to worry about when it comes to people like Hanson. John just sat over there himself and said, yeah, that, you know, it's, he jogs out there. He knows people run out there and walk out there every single day. So it's not,
It is.
It's not fair to call that part of town not pedestrian friendly. It's just as pedestrian friendly as the rest of town.
When I walk, I go that way too.
Exactly. I walk out that way.
I'm a bit tweet lately, but when I walk.
So, right, so I just think, yeah. What it comes down to it, when I do have the best of intentions, I just don't wanna deal with the paperwork from the city or their timetables. I would think, you know, the bigger issue would be the people who, who don't want to put a sidewalk in or, and are going to fight that.
So are you thinking a year would be reasonable amount of time? I mean, I know a lot happens in that time, but.
Right. I think a, a lot of things can be reasonable.
What we're probably gonna want is, like, just a timeframe, rough timeframe, and I think if you think a year would be, I mean, that's quite a bit of time to try and get something like that done. And I noticed in the ordinance too, it says, and I don't know if a lot of people know this, but it kinda caught my attention when I was reading it, about the thousand dollar loan, non- interest loan that the city can do.
She doesn't qualify for it. It doesn't work for new construction.
It's only for repairs and replacements.
Okay. So I don't know. I guess, to me, a year seems like it would be enough time for a sidewalk to get put in, but I'm not in your shoes and.
And just, this is just a recommendation. When you guys do reward the ordinance, put a timeframe in there because there's not one right now. So that's the biggest thing right now, to be able to, you know, you guys can request it, but, you know, it's hard to say, well, you have to do it within a year when it, it's not in the block yet, you know? It just says new construction. Like, heck, who knows? Maybe Payton's are gonna put one in too. They just haven't gotten around to it yet. You know, I'm just saying, for future reference, if you're gonna reward it.
Yeah, and I think that's something that the committee should look at, come up with a recommendation to us if there should be any timeframe on it or, or define when construction's done. Or if, or if you think it's necessary. But I, I, I think Teresa's suggestion of a year, you know, that would be a special accommodation to you. You know, and I think, you know, we're willing to bend somewhat on this. You know, since, since you have been helpful to us and, you know, calling all this to our attention, and it is really, and, and I mean this, it has forced us to be consistent going forward and I think to improving upon it. You know, it's a gradual evolution process of coming up, what's, what's a good workable procedure, you know, and I, I would feel, myself, I'd feel comfortable, you know, voting in favor of a year, you know, and, and of course, if something, you know, really off the wall or, you know, totally unexpected happens, you know, we can always amend that going, you know, forward, but I, I would like to see some timeframe.
Just have to come to us is what you'd have to do.
I, I would like to see.
I'm not asking for a year though. I'm asking for a waiver.
For how long though?
Ever.
Well, forever.
And what we're saying is, is we wanna be able to enforce it and, and not grant the waiver, but as an accommodation to go a year.
Yeah.
So is that what is gonna happen for Hanson's and Payton's, so also, so they're supposed to be given a year?
I think they need to be sidewalk put in there. That's my opinion. If we're gonna enforce it, then we need to enforce it.
They'd have to request it. I mean, in order to see it, they'd have to request it.
Well, we're dealing, we're dealing with Crystal's property at this point, and I think we need to look at one property at a time, being equitable with all of them. I, I, I agree that we probably need to look at that. But, um, I see that your building permit was issued on the twenty-eighth of August of two thousand twelve. If we do a year from now, that's really three years from the building permit to the time that the sidewalk is done.
Would someone like to make a motion that Crystal has a year to get her sid- Would someone like to make a motion that Crystal has a year to get her sidewalk put in? Because that's what I hear you wanting to do, and we can debate it for hours. But if that's, if you're ready to make a decision, let's make a decision.
Is that a year from when? That would be my next question for the council.
A year from now. I would make the motion...
July 31st, let's say.
Effective, okay, July 31st, one year hence, that should be the timeframe in which to have a sidewalk installed.
Let's have it in. Any other discussion?
I'm curious as to, Adam said he was waiting for the question to be able to send Hanson's a letter. I was just curious as to why that, what is the question?
I'm waiting to know what my enforcement apparatus, if they were going to forgive yours completely, I needed to know what to expect as far as enforcement on the other issues, the ones that need to be acted upon.
I think we were going to waive yours and he was going to let theirs be waived, too, would be my guess, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out how to enforce these others.
There is a motion, has been made and seconded, to move the date out for the completion of Crystal's sidewalk to July 31st of 2015. Would you call for a vote?
Counselperson, Bruning?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brannan?
Yes.
And Crystal, thanks for all your time and work.
My only other bit of information for you guys is that when I spoke with Larry Payton, he informed me that the city actually owns, only owns about a foot and a half of his parking. And so, my other question was, is the city going to take it upon themselves to install a sidewalk out there? Because he said, "When it comes to my property," he said, "The way it measures from the center of the road, however they do with the lots and whatnot, he said, "The city actually only owns about a foot and a half of the parking. They don't own, whatever it is, 10, 15 feet, you know, from the curb up in." And he said, "But I would be willing to sell him that part for about $10,000."
Oh, is that from the center line out or is it from the property marker on the original property?
I don't know. I don't know that Larry is an expert to have this discussion about at this point. I think that would, something we would have to look into. Because a lot of people incorrectly identify what the right-of-way area is. Usually, the right-of-way is much larger than a foot and a half. In fact, it's usually much larger than actually just where you put your sidewalk typically. It usually ranges quite a bit into the front of the property. So, I'd have to look, I mean, we'd have to have somebody look at that to identify it, you know, correctly. But a lot of people are mistaken about what their right-of-way are.
Well, I won't argue that. I'm just curious if he was right.
Well, that's something that can be checked out. Seven miscellaneous D is an update on recycling services.
I didn't know Gary had talked with you some about this.
But I could still reiterate some of this stuff if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
As of July 1, we now recycle glass. And what that includes is all food and beverage jars and bottles, including all colors of glass. Examples, soft drink, juice, beer, wine bottles, spaghetti sauce, baby food, pickle, and mayonnaise jars. It says, "Empty and rinse the jars and bottles, lids and labels are okay. Food and beverage containers only." Things that they will not accept are mirrors, window glass, drinking glass, plates, pottery, ceramics, and light bulbs are not recyclable. Some other things that are not recyclable on this list, so I'd like to just kind of go through real quickly. Furniture, furnace filters, metal pots and pans, kitchen appliances, and aluminum siding are not recyclable. Plastic bags, which is what Bruce brought up last week.
That's a change. That is a change.
Plastic bags, styrofoam products, toys, flower pots, waste baskets, laundry baskets, or Tupperware-type products are not recyclable. Hardcover books, fax paper, wax paper, tissue paper, wood products, and kitty litter are not recyclable. Waxed cardboard milk containers, pizza boxes, and dirty cardboard boxes are not recyclable. Dirty clothing, carpets, rags, rugs, and curtains are not recyclable.
Is clean clothing recyclable?
Yes, they actually...
We don't have an aspect right now to pick that up. I don't think any of the cities actually do have a system in place to pick up the clothing. One of the things that we've encouraged to this point is, is that if somebody wanted to recycle clothing that was usable, is to use one of the drop boxes that are currently located in town. I believe there's one at Food Pride and there's one at the gas station up here. But right now, none of the cities have a container available for the storage and transport of that material.
The thing that you also made a comment about, do not store this stuff in plastic bags and put them in a container in plastic bags. Because we don't take plastic bags. They can just leave the whole plastic bag and everything is in it.
That's going to be the new transitional change we're going to have to be talking about in the papers. Because that was a big change a couple of years ago when we started taking plastic bags. Now, we're going to go back to not taking plastic bags. So, there's going to be some education that's going to be required on this front.
Thank you for that information. That's important to know. Discussion E is a discussion on establishing a city's social host ordinance.
John?
The county, Diane Berry's here. They were in here probably, what, six months ago or a year ago?
Yes.
And they talked to the council here about a county ordinance for a social host. We just wanted to make a city one. Because right now, it's ruled that we have a violation of it in our city limits. It has to be brought to the county attorney, and then he has to file a charge, so we're just kind of trying to take him out of it.
That would give us a greater portion of the fines, too.
Yes, that's not, yep.
Why don't you kind of reiterate that?
So, what do you want to re, how do you want it to go?
I pretty much want to take the county's ordinance and turn it into a city one, which would be a simple, I mean, to make it easy.
And it would have the same fines.
The same fines, which is 750, I believe, right? A thousand and then 1500, yep.
Can you kind of explain what that is?
Yeah, if you, any person, you know, an adult having a party at their residence or a place they stay at, you know, and there's minors caught there, you know, it would get the city then to...
Allowing them to...
Allowing.
One of the things I did want to clarify for the council, so when you understand, when their definition of a adult, an adult would be anybody at their house 21-years-old or older. So, in essence, if you, say, have an apartment, you're 21-years-old and you rent an apartment and you live in that apartment and you invite underage drinkers over to your house.
Which would be anybody under 21.
Then that person, that 21-years-old, because usually when we think of parents, we think of somebody in their 30s through potentially 60s possibly, that have somebody at their house when they're not home or home.
I believe this business wrote that even a 19-year-old, you don't have to be 21.
It's anyone 18 and older is considered an adult.
18 and in charge of the property, correct?
Correct.
If an 18-year-old would get an apartment, it would be the same.
So, say a son, say the parents are out of town and the son's 19-years-old, has a party, and is including 18, 19, 20-year-olds in addition to the juveniles that are, you know, 15, 16, 17. They can be the social hosts.
Instead of being, also being a violation of underage drinking, it'd also be...
Correct. And they would, because they're in control of the property.
Property, correct. Thank you.
At the time of the party. So, and there is a state law that went into effect.
Can we vote on it?
But it's criminal. And it does not cover parties that have the 18, 19, 20-year-olds. It covers juveniles. So, this is stricter than the state criminal law. It's covering that loophole.
So, it's been in place for about a year at the county level?
At the county level.
How many times has it been enforced? Do you know?
It has been brought to the desk now twice.
We have one now that, which brought to our attention that we're going to, or we're going to, wanted to charge, and we brought to the county attorney to charge a subject.
Has it gone actually to the court? Has it been tested in the court?
No, it has not. So, we're just really tightening it up a little bit further. That, you know, it's good to have something on the books, but it's also good to enforce it the way it's intended and just to follow through with it.
I present, when John presented this to me, I met with Colin last week and presented it to him and made him aware. And he didn't express any objection to the establishment.
State law doesn't supersede its code of the right.
No, it does not. No, because...
Charged under municipal infractions, is it not?
Yeah, and it was written in the state law that if you have a stricter local ordinance, that that can supersede.
Yeah, they allow home roll under those circumstances.
I have a question. If the party is in Sac City and we only have a county ordinance, are our police officers supposed to be involved with...
We wrote it that way, that it was enforced with...
It is, so, but the county would get the money.
Yes.
Of the fines.
Yes.
With your work.
But this way, we get the money.
We're not doing this as a moneymaker, though. I mean, this is trying to prevent any minors from having parties.
But it also makes it a quicker process if it's our...
That's why I like it. It's a quicker process for us. We don't have to wait on the county attorney. I mean, that's a little added plus, yeah, the city gets the money, but, you know, it's not that.
And, you know, for us passing the county...
Well, it's only happened twice in the last year.
... ordinance was just that first step, and now we're tightening things up and just making sure that it's enforced the way it's supposed to, just on, at the city level and the county level and all that.
Well, it's only for discussion tonight.
I was just looking for feedback.
Ask to put on the agenda.
Can we get this on the agenda for the next meeting as a first reading of this ordinance? That would mirror that one except change of county verbiage to city verbiage?
I will draft as such.
F, review of resolution number 2014-04 entitled City of Sac City Governing Body Rules of Procedure.
This would also be a part of our discussion items for Thursday morning. So, there's no intended action tonight on this as well. It's just more preparation for Thursday night.
Thursday night, no?
Thursday morning.
This coming Thursday?
Yes. You'll see within here, I, you might remember at our last meeting, we had a video presentation by the general counsel from the League of Cities. And he discussed quite a bit more than just what we were looking at as far as what we wanted to discover. But I took quite a bit of notes during that conversation for changes, potential changes. You might remember he also provided to us copies of both Griswold and the City of Des Moines procedural practices. What you will see included in here is, after taking those notes and making some adaptations, you'll see in red, I know Annette missed one spot in here where it was not, it was read it up, but it was just a numerical element, that you'll see what I had taken out of those conversations. You'll see that some areas are struck through. Those are the way it currently reads. Those are the ones I'd be saying would be eliminated as a part of that. The language in red that's underlined would be the language that would be added as a result of that. Some of it's purely cleaning up a little bit of language here and there. I think it was our intent, when I went back through my notes, to set public discussion for open items, not on the agenda to three minutes. And we had drafted it at five, so I checked it to three. One element that had come into discussion before that seemed to not be advantageous for process was that it said that if a motion fails, that it couldn't be reconsidered for 12 months. I have proposed in here that we cut that back to two months because, or we could even change it even further if you guys wished. The point there being is it's better to make good laws than it is to base it upon any time period. So, that's one adaptation I made. More out of the discussions of some of these procedures that really had nothing to do with the following discussion. I stand ready to answer any questions you have about it. There's a lot of pages here, but, and I do believe, did all of you see the video? Bill, did you get a chance to watch it after the fact?
I did not.
Okay, and I don't think, I think you were out of town, Teresa. I still have access to it if anyone, if you would still like to, if you have any questions about the changes that we're in here.
No, we've been through this, line item by line item before, except now with these changes.
The first change you see in there is probably the most significant change. I basically took, based upon his conversation, I used the Des Moines model and basically with very minor adaptation, 2.04 now basically reads the same way that Des Moines reads. And in following conversations, you will see on page 12 at the top of the page, which is part of 2.09, you will see that there is actually a clarification of the process for voting. There was a discussion about clearly identifying that after a motion and second is made, having a final discussion before the, make sure that there's a final discussion before the call for a vote. So, that makes sure there was ample amount of opportunity to have discussion on both sides of the motion.
Do you want it actually called for? Is there any final discussion? I always thought if somebody had more questions, they would say something, but I will say...
It'd be even more clarified that there's no question that everyone had an opportunity to make their final statement.
All right, that's perfect, refined.
This, of course, like I said, is not for voting purposes tonight. I would ask if you had any questions or comments tonight, so that I could add them in for our discussion Thursday morning. I'd be happy to do so.
Can I bring these Thursday morning?
I'd ask you to bring these with you Thursday morning. And if you have anything between now and Thursday, please let me know, so that I can attempt to already pre-include it in the conversation.
Even though you're out of the office, I'd like to know.
Yeah, you like the way that works? So, the important factor here is what I've gotten from the group is, is that we've been wanting to move forward with this and wanting to get this resolved. My hope is, is that we can hammer this out Thursday morning. And then on the first meeting in August, we would have the resolution on the agenda for that purposes of updating.
There's one question I have. It says, "Technical parliamentary forms are abolished." I've researched, anyplace I've looked, I can't figure out what a technical parliamentary form actually is.
I actually did ask Bruce Bergman today, because you had brought this to my attention earlier today, exactly what was the explanation for that terminology? And he said, "He said that has to do with points of clarification, whether it be a point of order, whether it be a point of privilege, whether it be..." You know, you usually don't see those used in our form of government in this country. You don't see too many people asking for a point of order or a point of question or a point of information. Typically, where that kind of occurs, just for the rest of the council members, is if somebody has the floor and they're discussing things. There's very limited situations where you can interrupt a speaker that has the floor. And points of action are what allow you that ability to do it. So, technical parliamentary forms are the ones that allow you to, I would almost call it, it almost allows you, the way he explained to me is, it allows you to interrupt normal flow of process. It would be actions that allow you to interrupt the normal flow of process.
It would be nice...
Like in England.
That would be, I guess, I mean, I hate to have anything into the, we don't know what it is. I mean, if you can't find, if you can't find a definition of it, that to me is bothers. That's maybe just me being too old.
Think about it. Maybe you can change the wording.
Sure. Well, you will see that the second sentence, and he pointed that out to me, kind of defines it for you. It says, "Except as specifically required by these rules, the council shall not use any formal points of parliamentary order, personal privilege, parliamentary inquiry, or other technical forms." And of course, you could argue the other technical forms makes it unclear. But if you limit it to just parliamentary order, personal privilege, and parliamentary inquiry, what you're really doing is isolating points of order, points of information from the discussion.
Is there a majority of the municipalities that are using this procedure?
Most of them do not have a written process.
Okay, larger communities?
Yes. Most of them do not have, most smaller communities in Iowa do not have a written process. In fact, that was one of the things, where this originally came from, the development of this plan was from a League of Cities meeting we attended a couple of years ago. And while I was there, one of the discussion items that was brought up by the city, I believe it was Newark was leading the presentation that day, was that it was one of the best things they did because then when they had, what it does is it clear, it provides two things for you. One, when you have a new council member coming onto the council, you have some kind of information you can provide them that makes them understand a little bit better how the process, the operation goes for not only council meetings, but some of the conduct that's expected out of elected officials. The second thing that it does is it provides some kind of written formation of how the process will work. You know, for instance, up till that point, the question would be is, well, there was always questions being asked about, well, could you make a point of order? Up till this forum, it was not clear whether you could make a point of order or not. It was not... It was not clear whether you could interrupt a speaker or not. One of the things the Des Moines system actually advocates, and I'm not a huge fan of, is the Des Moines plan, other portions of the Des Moines plan include that once, that you have to be recognized by the chair in order to speak, and no one could interrupt you until the chair recognizes them and gives them an opportunity to speak. So, there's no interactive dialogue. All the dialogue is, you get your chance to speak, you speak your whole point, and then, even if there's something that's incorrect in your statement, that I could easily say, oh, well, Teresa, you know, actually, that was 95, not 98, you know, I wouldn't have the opportunity to point that out during your discussion and maybe correct the statement being made during the discussion. I would have to wait till you got done speeding and then correct that issue. And so, so it does kind of restrict interactive dialogue in their process. But that is one further element that I know Des Moines has that most cities don't have. I bet, I would also say they have a lot more interruption issues that go on at their meetings than we...
They have a larger council.
Okay. We'll move on to G, committee and department head reports.
See, in the committee reports, is there, is anything being done about removing the roof of the water treatment plant?
I was going to bring that up. I was asked to come out and look at the roof by one of the employees out there. I have not been out there yet. He said he's brought it up several times, that the roof get repaired, and nothing's gotten done about it.
Okay. Well, it would be their job to take action on it. They would be the one that would instigate having the individual come in and do the work. So, I'll be happy to talk to Jim and see about getting that taken care of.
A wastewater plant, sorry.
Wastewater, wastewater, wastewater plant.
Oh, you're talking, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking about...
You said wastewater. I was on the same page as you, right?
Yeah. I mean, I know whether I did or not, I meant wastewater.
I think you said wastewater.
I, I'm sorry. I was thinking...
He said water.
Water, drink water.
Well, I knew what I was thinking, and I thought that's what you said.
That's a whole nother ball of wax.
Wastewater, not water drink.
Um, that is a legal, there is some legality issues going on associated with that. In fact, I met with Colin last week on this issue.
Okay, because I've been going on quite a while now, right?
There is a conference call scheduled next week between engineers, Colin, myself, that I should, I would not be surprised if we don't have a closed session issue going on at the next council meeting.
I've been asked to ask if we can provide dumpsters for the freecycle day, like we have in the past, at the entrance of the Shippensburg building?
We've usually, either, we either use one of, we've usually moved the park one down there for that purpose. If it's not available for the park one, the other thing that we've done is asked for permission from the county to see if they would be willing to provide one for the event.
I was just supposed to ask, has you been really good about doing it in the past?
Sure.
You know, just one other point, and I brought this up at the last meeting where Mid-America has a pole and transformer right close to the number two water well, which is just up by the number nine hole at the golf course. And, you know, that whole block between Ninth and Tenth Street and the golf course of DeGishwater, that was without power. Interrupting, and created some hard feelings with some of the folks there, but it was really Mid-America's communication, and their pole is too close to the well, and thus, it had, the power did have to be shut off for that well work to take place. And Adam and, we're pursuing, checking into that further, if there's any alternatives or recourse that we have, let's say with the power board. I just kind of wanted you to be aware of that, that Mid-America didn't manage that process very well and kind of passed the buck on to the city, where we took, you know, some of the fall on that. And I think we need to...
For everyone to understand, what occurred was, is that up till recently, the policy of Mid-America knows is that they would drape the electrical lines for these companies to do this type of activity, or other companies to do this type of activity. And they've now changed that policy in the last few years. They no longer will drape the electric lines. So, now that they're not doing that anymore, they're now, since they're not willing to do that, they're having to turn electricity off when these situations occur. I know of at least one other Western Iowa community that's dealing with this same exact issue right now, too. And maybe, of course, at this point, has been to open a dialogue with Mid-America to move their electrical service line where it currently sits, because this problem's not going to go away. And with their change in policy, it now creates a problem for us. It's going to exist for, for all the foreseeable future at this point. So, I would think the most prudent thing for us to do is, is I'm waiting for a response from Mid-America to see how willing they are to work on this issue. But you're absolutely right, there may be other recourse that we'll be looking at taking if Mid-America isn't willing to work with us.
It was a different subject. I was contacted by Amanda Riedel today. She lives, so it looks like in the Christian church parking lot, the house that Dave Engel we did, wondering about the possibility. She said she talked to the police department, and the police said that she should talk to us about getting a child at play sign or something in that area, said that several neighbors were interested in that. And I suggested she talk to Adam to get on our agenda for next time.
Yeah, I haven't heard from her.
That was, that was probably 4:30 this afternoon, so I'm sure you probably haven't. I guess one other item that was, I was wondering about it, or looking at the street things and talking about perhaps the planning and zoning officer being the one who enforces them. The salary of the zoning officer, I believe, has been the same since 2006 or 2007, and that's kind of a long time to have been there. I, I personally would like to see us maybe at least do an incremental upgrade, if we could put something on the agenda for next time, because he's not a part of the bargaining unit for the city employees, and I think it's been overlooked for that long. I think it'd be nice if we were able to do at least a little bit of rest.
I think he needs to be in the position longer than he's already been in it before we do that, though. He just...
Well, my recommendation would have the P&amp;Z board review this, provide a recommendation to the council. I think that'd be the appropriate place for that to probably go.
Does anyone have anything else?
You want to mention that P&amp;Z down there?
Sure. I'll be happy to present, that that item's been brought up for discussion.
So, that's how... Are they fine, yeah?
Just on, you know, I get requests all the time for these, these signs and stop signs for kids playing, you know, the cars speeding on the streets. I think that's another good reason to have these sidewalks, because it keeps the kids off the streets. They're walking down the sidewalks, and that's, that's the main reason for sidewalks.
Or riding their bikes on the sidewalks instead of...
You know, it's for kid's safety, we try to put stop signs, and people tend to ask. But I mean, that's the main reason for the sidewalks.
Sidewalks are for pedestrians.
Well, you see lots of bicycles on them, too, though.
I know, I know. Okay, we have council forum, Adam.
I have two or three things. I was approached by a, two different individuals about the city starting to entertain the idea of allowing ATVs inside city limits. I, I told them I would be happy to at least brain the issue to the council. I expressed that there were some concerns over insurance and things of that nature.
There are very big concerns over insurance.
And so, I...
Did the county ever pass theirs?
They are not licensed to run the road.
I am not aware whether or not they file a license or not.
I thought theirs was a standstill, is what I heard.
Well, my previous life, part of ours was identification of vehicles, and at that time, the DOT for a while was allowing them and giving them a permit to ride on the road. Then they come back to the conclusion of liability. Number one, the manufacturer's certificate of origin says not made for highway use. The tires on it say not for highway use. If there's an accident or something that you allow them to come into the road on the vehicle that's not made for the highway, are we in a liability?
They don't have any.
Just a thought.
Two other things I wanted to share was that we had someone come in and do an analysis of our North Fifth Street Bridge, the bridge over there by the VFW, because there's quite a bit of chipping we've seen over the years, and we've known that from a CIP standpoint, that's something that's on the horizon at some point. At this point, I wanted to make the council aware that part of that inspection believed that the, that the bridge was not a total loss right now as far as when it goes to be repaired. You know, there's a point where you have to do a total replacement. We haven't reached that point with the bridge itself. However, the cost associated with repairing the bridge at this point ranged between $50,000 and $60,000,000. So, I wanted to start at least making you aware of that. It's ideally not a, ideal financial time, but I wanted to make you aware that that's something we need to start thinking about. I will have copies of the formal report available to you in the next...
I think we need to know how long it will go, because $50,000,000 sounds like a lot less than $250,000 to replace it.
That's not a, that's not a farm-to-market road with the county either, is it?
It has.
It had, it is.
I know South Fifth Street is, so I didn't know.
It's north, because it paints the North Fifth Street.
So, do we need to approach the county about that one, too?
Well, and that kind of is a good segue into my last thing. I got a call from Mr. Hayden while I was out, and he wants to meet with me about South Fifth Street. So, when we meet on South Fifth Street, I will talk with him, start to talk with him about the North Fifth Street Bridge as well.
They will take care of 22 feet, what he said.
The other thing, the other thing that is an element of discussion that will move forward is, is that with being an alternative route for DOT during the construction process happening on 196, they're also involved in the discussion, so.
So, when, when does that go into effect?
Be next spring.
Okay. Could repairs, I mean, are we looking at repairs on that bridge prior to that? Is that kind of traffic on that bridge going to really...
M-54 is going to be the alternative route?
Yes.
While there, okay.
Yes. So, for growing south.
Right.
Um, I would suspect that a lot of your easternly-bound traffic will probably still take 71 and go around, but I think your west, your westbound traffic going south will end up either turning, turning on to M-54, or they'll end up turning at Litton or turning at Rockwell City. You'll see one of those alternative routes end up being used. So, yes, we will see a heightened amount of traffic. I've sent reports to the DOT on the state of the bridge, and there's been some discussion about that as well.
Okay.
At this point, that's very preliminary.
Would they be willing to share any cost in that?
I think that's what he might have been getting at. That's what I was reading into his conversation anyhow.
Charge him the toll.
Is there anything else? For the good or the cause?